We are now on to administrative reports. We're going to start with our graduation rates.
Yes, we are. So there are two screens and I'm going to go through the presentation just to share some data points. We have several presentations this evening, so obviously the first one is graduation, which is actually going to lead very nicely into the second with the high school alternative education program that we have piloted this year. And then we get to close with what I'm going to call is the annual assurance for the Oregon Department of Ed. So we will work through all those. But I want to begin with the 2018-19 Central High School graduation rates, which were publicly released from the Oregon Department of Education about two and a half weeks ago. And again, this has been the first time that we can have the conversation. So we're going to begin, as I always do, with definitions because I think it's an important starting point. So this is really the definition of what an Oregon diploma is. The diploma requirements in the state have been developed in partnership with schools across the state to better prepare students for life beyond high school. To earn a diploma, students need to successfully complete the credit requirements, demonstrate proficiency in essential skills, and meet the personalized learning requirements. Policy IKF, which is our graduation requirements, clarifies the process and credits within Central School District. Slide two defines what a cohort graduation rate is, and this is going to be a very important point. I talk about cohort data a lot, and so again, this is going to be a part of it. These are students who are first-time high school students in a particular year and determines the percentage that they graduate within a given timeframe. On-time cohort graduation is defined as four consecutive years, once entering the first time in ninth grade year. So again, once you enter a ninth grade, your first time, I step in school September this year, four years from now becomes the four-year cohort rate. You also see language on how the cohort, really, students is defined within that slide. Slide three, you can see at the bottom, actually shows that, I think it's important to share this, the actual mathematic definition of what and how we get to that four-year cohort graduation rate. So again, if we start with a total number, there are some backouts you can see, and then that's divided into that to get us our overall graduation rates. The next slide defines the five-year cohort graduation rate. And one of the things, since I have been the superintendent here, yes, we want to try and graduate students on time, but I also know not always is that the easiest thing for all students, and so it's very important that we are paying attention to our five-year cohort rates. The Department of Education also includes these rates to better reflect our success within the schools that we are overall having with students. And again, that mathematical definition is very similar to what the four-year cohort rate is. So I'm going to begin with, as always, positive. Listed above here on this slide identifies all of the student groups from Central High School who are above the state of Oregon average for the four-year cohort graduation. So that is an extensive list. I'm very proud of that, what the school is doing of being above the state average in all of those student cohort groups. So I'm going to start to dive down a little bit into specific data points. So again, you're going to see a similar type of slide with different student groups and data, and I'm going to talk through that. So this slide shows the results of all students and a breakdown by male and female students over the last three years. So again, the trend data is part of always our conversation. Although this is cohort data, when you're talking about graduation, they are not the same students. So at times when I talk about the student or state assessment, we are actually tracking from a cohort the same student. This is cohort data, but from year to year, we have different graduation. They are not the same students within that. So the other thing I added on the far-right columns, you will see two sets of numbers, which are identified as the adjusted cohort for Central High School for the last two years. So this is the actual number of students that are in that four-year cohort. And you're going to see that data throughout this presentation of all of our different groups, student groups within the district. So of the 227 cohort students, 175 students this past year received a full Oregon regular diploma. Nine received the Oregon Modified Diploma. One received an Extended Diploma. And five students earned their GED. Eleven have continued in enrollment into this year, so the 19-20 school year. And then 26 are non-completers, and that non-completor is really that dropout. So again, that's the overall picture of our data of the 227 in the cohort for 2018-19. You also see in this slide that student groups highlighted in red have graduation, as I said, rates above the state of Oregon. So again, if you, that student group is highlighted in red, they're above the state average. If the number in the 2018 cohort graduation rate column is red, that means that there was growth of 1% or more from 2017-18 to 2018-19 for Central High School. If the number in the 2018-19 cohort graduation rate column is highlighted yellow, then there was a decrease of 1% or more from the 2017-18 to the 2018-19 cohort rates. I think one of the highlights you can see is you can see that there was a 5% decrease in our male graduates from 2017-18 to 2018-19 within this slide. The next slide shows the result of our Hispanic, Latino, our multiracial, and white students. Again, student groups highlighted in red have graduation rates above the state of Oregon average. Central's multiracial student group increased by over 12% from 2017-18 to 2018-19. That's a significant jump, which is great with what they're doing at the high school. However, you see a slight decrease in our white students' graduation from 2017-18 to 2018-19. Again, I want to just show, that far-right column again are the number of students in each of those student groups, just as a reference point, and really that shows the last two years.
Jen?
Yes?
Quick question on, back up on.
Sure.
So at what point, I was just looking, this is the first group that's shown up, it's a pretty small group under multiracial.
Yes.
At what level do we kind of stop looking at the percentage because it's not really meaningful?
Yeah, it's really when we start getting into those lower below 10. And you're going to see a couple of times here that we, there is an NA, and I'll talk through that.
Right, because you can't, you could identify.
I think that, for me, anything when you're talking, again, that N becomes significant because if your N is 10 to 20, it can be...
Right, it's going to jump all over the place.
Correct. And I think that's partly why I'm bringing it this way this year, is because that N group can shift your graduation rate. So we just need to keep that at face value when we are looking at data. Again, we want all groups regardless of N going in a positive direction, but again, those small numbered groups, less than 25, could have up and down in the data from year to year. Good question. All right, which slide do we want? Our next results are our underserved races and ethnicities, so that's all of the groups put together, as well as our economically disadvantaged students. So again, those students that are identified in poverty. The far-right, again, column gives the number of students in each of those groups over the last three, two years. Again, the students highlighted in the red have graduation rates above the state average. Slide nine shows the results of our students with disabilities, homeless students, and combined disadvantaged, so both of those groups combined together. Again, that far-right column gives the number of students in each student group for the last two years. This is, as I showed before, you can see an NA in the 2017-18 adjusted cohort, which means that students count size is low, and that information is suppressed to protect the identification of those students. So that is going to happen from year to year in some of the different student groups that we have. In this slide, you can see Central students with disabilities decreased over 7% from 2018 to 2019. Again, you can see that number fluctuate a little bit. However, what I'm excited about is the homeless students have increased over 14% from 2017 to 18. So again, getting good supports for some of our most vulnerable students within the school. Slide 10 shows the results of our former English learners. Our English learners any time in high school, that means at any point they potentially were put into the programming. Never English learners, which is any student that is not an English learner, because again, that's part of that, looking at the overall picture of how successful students are being, and our migrant students. Again, that far-right is the overall numbers for each of the groups the last two years. Central's former English learners graduation rates decreased almost 8% from 2017 to 2018-19. However, Central had an increase of 10% in our English learners any time in the high school graduation rates from 17-18 to 18-19, which is a good step in that direction. Slide 11 shows the results of students who participate in CTE classes, and you can see those graduation rates dropped almost 5% from 17-18 to 18-19. Again, that is partly why we're investing and making some shifts. There are some major shifts last year in our career and technical education pathways, and we're continuing to have that conversation at the high school. Slide 12, and again, I put really our three-year trends for the five-year cohort rates. Again, these are the first seven identified student groups. As you can see, all the student groups listed on this slide are above the Oregon state average, which is again, a success. If the, again, you can see if the number in the 2018 cohort graduation rate column is red, there was growth of 1% or more. If the number in the 2018-19 cohort graduation column is highlighted in yellow again, then there was a decrease of 1% or more for the 2000, from the 2017-18 rates to this year. And then slide 13 is again, a three-year trend of the five-year cohort for the other nine identified student groups within our report. Again, a majority of the student groups listed here are above the state average. Several groups, students with disabilities, former English learners, never English learners, and combined disadvantaged, have had a 1% or more increase from 17-18 to 18-19. And again, with that, I just want to open the floor up to questions. I think part of the next presentation is the why, of why we have moved to really piloting a program, because not always is a, we want to make sure, we want to have the best environments for all of our students at the Central High School. However, not always is a comprehensive high school the best setting for every student within our community. So again, I'll open the floor for graduation questions. I may bring up both Ms. Servigny as well as Ms. Larson because they are embedding and starting to do some amazing things, especially with our ninth grade on track. I think one of the things and part of why I hired both of them, to be very honest, is we were not doing a good job of tracking credits. We've made some major shifts since the two of them have come on board, as well as shifted staff to do some of those pieces. Again, I think that's a work in progress. When you have four principals in five years, that's really hard to build those systems, and everybody did what they could to move that in the right direction, but having good solid foundation can help move that in that direction, and they've done some amazing things really in the last year and a half to start embedding that into a system within the high school. So I'll pause, and questions from you in regards to the graduation rates?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
So I think one of the more thorough presentations we've had on graduation rates, so I don't have any questions either.
I think I just have a comment, if I could, please. I was really pleased that you offered an explanation to our patrons about kids coming to school at the high school or any level that have never been in school before.
Yeah.
And at the high school level, that dramatically does impact graduation, and there are any number of students I can think of that entered the high school who had either never been to school, or been to school for maybe three years in another country, or even in our own country, moving around so frequently. So thank you for emphasizing that because that's really important for the public to understand when it comes to some of these graduation numbers.
Yeah, and we're going to continue, and I appreciate that, Director Joe. I think that one of the things that you're going to see in the Student Success Act and some of the things that we will be coming to the board with is specifically to focal groups that have not done well in our school district. And so that is going to be a huge focus, and we are working with the schools and our teams of teachers and classified staff and our unions to really put that best foot forward in what's going to be best programming, best movement of staff, or hiring of staff as we go through that process, to really focus on those focal groups.
Where are we ranked against other five-year students, five-year schools on the...
So I haven't, I'll be honest, I have not done that. Right now, my focus is working with the high school and how we continue to build programmings to increase that. I can tell you that we are not in the bottom 10% overall from a school district, but again, we have some work to do. I think that, I'm very proud and will continue to, because I think it's important that we are above the state average, and that is a huge success. There's great growth. You're going to hear next from both Mr. Clark and Ms. Servigny about some of those next steps. 16 to 20 kids can move us from 80 to almost 90%. So just giving you that quick data, just a group of 20 can shift your data significantly when you're only talking about, you know, over the last five years' average of about 230 total students in the graduating class average.
I have one more comment, and that is, I would like at some point, if it's possible, for us to be able to explain to our patrons the incredibly high standards that we have for our students in Oregon, those Common Core state standards. I know sometimes when patrons will talk to me about, "Well, why can't you just graduate them?" Well, the world has changed in the last 20 years, and I like to let people know how incredibly difficult those standards are.
Yeah, it is, that is, and I appreciate that because we are doing a lot of work in the district on the standards, and what are the essential standards for students to really learn so they know how to learn, whether it be reading, writing, math. So I would be, you know, open to being able to share from our different schools just what they're doing within, whether it be K5, 6, 8, 9, 12, in those standards, because we're doing some good work to allow kids to be successful in learning, and again, we're moving in the right direction. As I've shared with you all, the data takes time, and it's not going to be in a two-years, we're going to see significant changes, but we will see growth overall as we continue forward.
Jen, a quick question.
Sure.
Certainly, the right place to start working on graduation rates is at the high school because that's where it's going to happen most quickly and probably be the most rewarding in terms of efforts, but we know that it starts much earlier than that. And, you know, we track Sback data and stuff. Do we have a sense yet whether we're able to look at, you know, is that, are we getting kids coming into high school more prepared than they used to be, or are we just kind of holding our own there?
So we have just, since I have been here, started to embed what is called really a universal screener to sort of say, where are our kids at specifically right now in reading? And also through implementation of a couple of programs, which we can share more about that, specific to being able to show that growth in reading. We're continuing to have conversations across the school district. I always say, and I share this, I think the most important assessment is the day-to-day that our teachers are doing, which is identified as a formative assessment, that's what we call it. But we are in the process of working with our staffs to say, okay, a couple of times a year, how do we do a quick dip to say, are we, where are we? Are we moving students? That allows us to stop, do the dip, adjust if we need to. And so some of those systems we are building. We started with reading because reading is one of the key pieces, reading and writing, lead to really good math. I mean, again, not that we're not doing math, but that's a big part of our main focus, are our kids reading at grade level? If not, how are we catching them up? Since I've been here, Mr. LaBounte came to me very quickly and said, "I'm seeing the gaps. Can we put in a program?" He's been doing it now three years. We are seeing growth from the reading side because that's a significant part of this first step, but we have amazing teachers and classified staff that are digging into things to really move the holistic needle, and are starting to ask me really good questions. It fills my heart when they say, "We need to move in this direction, Jen," and I look at them and say, "Yep, we're going to move, but we need to get better at this first. We continue to get better at this, and then we're going to add the next thing, and then we'll get better at that, and then we'll add the next thing," because you cannot overwhelm your staff too quickly, and we have those conversations all the time to make sure that we're doing it in a really authentic way, to support students first, staff, our families, and then obviously our community.
Do you want to segue on to the AltEd program?
Yeah, so with that, I'm going to have Jared, if you would switch that for me, and then I'm going to have Ms. Servigny and Mr. Clark come on up. Would you like the, I think it'll reach. That one's the right. So let me, before they start, I just want to just say a couple of things. I'm really excited for this. I don't know, there were a couple of you, I think possibly Peggy and Dawn, we had a community meeting probably the winter of my, Jen, you may have been as well as the building principal, the spring of my first year where we had an outside group come in and just ask us questions about rural, and are we seeing concerns of not having alternative ed or other options within that? So again, I'm just excited for them to share what has been built thus far this year. We house the alternative education program in this building. So we have about 20 of our students, plus we have a community partner, which we'll talk through this presentation. So we have at any point in time up to 40 kids, students being in this building. It was, we had a fire drill the other day, and my entire staff in this building were like, "Whoa, there's lots of kids in here." And just realistically, they didn't know because their kids are doing what they need to do, they're in the programming, they're just, we're starting to build some really good things where not always a comprehensive high school is a good fit for every student. So I'm really excited. This funding comes out of this high school, excuse me, the High School Success Grant, otherwise known as Measure 98, that was passed four years ago, I believe. Is that four? Three years ago, the first, the last biennium. And again, this, that grant is specifically focused on how do we develop and expand career and technical education? How do we continue to increase our graduation rates? And how do we do dropout prevention? So really, that is where the funding for this has started. So with that, I turn it over to these lovely people.
Good evening and thank you. So I'm Donna Servigny, principal at Central High School, and I'm joined by Jason Clark, who is here at the district office and helping to implement and oversee. He's the administrator onsite here in case there are things that come up, and then also helping with the implementation of the AltEd program. So Jennifer set the tone by sharing some of our graduation rates just a second ago, and then talking about how the funding that came from the state for dropout prevention through high school success, and so that is the funding source that we're looking at in being able to provide an AltEd program for our students at Central High School. I do want to share this slide, however. So this shows, one of the things that we're really making an effort to do is track the credits earned by our students. So students need 24 credits to graduate high school. They should be earning at least six credits every year that they're in high school to be able to stay on track for graduation, and so that's, Dr. Cabista was talking earlier about our freshman on-track team. So we are really focusing, starting with freshman year, to make sure that we have some measures in place to monitor our freshmen, that they're staying on track, and then on the flip side of that, we're monitoring our seniors and juniors who might be becoming credit deficient and giving them an alternative way to catch up or earn those credits. So in 18-19 seniors who started in the fall, we had 227 seniors. Forty-five of those seniors were credit deficient and had fewer than 18 credits. Seniors with fewer than 15 credits, there were 18 of them, so 8%. So if you compare back to our dropout rates that we were just looking at, that's one of our gap areas are those students who are just credit deficient. So in between those three credits, students who have, you know, maybe they're deficient by two credits or three credits, we do have Panther Online, so they can be taking that during the school day at Central High School. It's a fairly, I don't want to say simple, but it's a fairly easy way for them to get access to being able to make up those credits. But when we start looking at somebody who's four credits or five credits, sometimes six or seven credits deficient, that becomes more and more difficult to work in within the school day. And so we are looking at, how can we provide students an opportunity to catch up so that we can keep them in our schools and keep them making progress towards graduation? For some of them, they can do that within that four-year cohort time span. Some students need that additional fifth year, sometimes some summertime, to be able to complete and finish that program, but we want to keep them connected and servicing them so that we don't lose them as part of those dropout numbers that we saw earlier. I'm going to speed through this slide because it just shows those graduation rates, and we just took a pretty in-depth look at those. So this again is just sharing where we are as far as dropouts go, students who are completing with an alternative program or a GED, something equivalent, and then those who are looking at a fifth year to be able to complete that standard diploma.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Say, non-completor dropout. I assume that includes somebody that's, you know, either in their fourth or fifth year, decides they're done, but does not have a diploma, so they're not actually dropping out of the sort of normal path, but they are considered a non-completor, is that correct?
So it could be non-completors because they have had attendance patterns where they are no longer coming to school, but they didn't enroll elsewhere, and they haven't completed, and we've lost them from the system somehow. So it could be literally somebody who dropped out from school. It can also be students who just don't make graduation and then just don't pursue and persist through, and so we lose them from the process that way as well. So it's part of, like Dr. Cabista was sharing, it's part of really tracking our students, knowing who they are, making phone calls, connecting them with our grad coach, and being able to offer alternatives to showing them that they can do this if they stick with us, right? So when we were looking at building an AltEd program, we were considering who are some of our ideal candidates for piloting the program, and our intention this year is to build a strong program with students that we know can stick with us so that we can get the program going, see where the bumps in the road are, fix things, and then eventually our goal is to be able to bring in some of our more at-risk students into the fold once we have a good, solid working program. So we were looking at students who were credit deficient or had some attendance barriers to school, but were still making effort to be in school. So right now, we don't have students that we have brought back completely from that dropout status. That's not the majority. We have one or two students who are in that scenario, but we do have students who are credit deficient or were struggling to attend, but were still making an effort to attend, but may have anxiety or some sort of a barrier that was keeping them from coming to school on that regular basis. Some of the protective factors that we've put in place with our AltEd program, we have a hybrid classroom, so some online with personalized instruction, specifically in English Language Arts right now, and I'll talk more about where we intend to go with that program as a goal. Some, a small learning environment with accountability structures, so our students are really in with a teacher, they are asked to call her if they're going to be absent. She's really tracking and following, a lot of close contact with parents. Our students eat lunch together, so there's not that opportunity for students to go missing in between passing periods or at lunchtime. So there's a little bit more accountability around that small group of learners. They are a learning community, so we set them up to be supportive of one another, and they help keep each other accountable as well. And then the whole child approach where our classroom teacher and the IA, who are working together, really think about that whole story for our student and how we can support them in that well-rounded structure and not just, not just as a learner and earning credits, but also just supporting them as individuals and students. So this year, we developed a process for identifying and selecting those students. We identified those who were at risk. Our counselors had a conversation with them about the program and gave them a brochure. We asked that they attend some orientation meetings. So a student came for a day to tour and see the program to make sure that, we want to make sure that it would be a good fit for them. And then we also asked that a parent come to the orientation meeting, so we had, just we wanted them to make sure that they were on board. And then the student completed an application. We had a panel that got together to review those applications to again, make sure that this was a best fit for the program and for the student, and then we... and for the student. And then we worked there to transition the students to the Alt Ed program and setting them up for their next steps there.
Thank you, Mrs. Servignan. I'll take the next part. I've kind of got the bonus here. I get to talk about the features of the program, the Alt Ed program, and some of the neat things that we have going right now. One of those is the ability to identify the levels of tailored instructional programming. As students are identified for the program through assessments, work samples, we take a look at their academic levels and just see some of their needs that they may have as they come into the program. With that, a personalized education plan is established, set up, that we're aware of the struggles that they may have, able to focus in those areas, and also focus on the credits needed and that path towards graduation. Ms. Servignan did mention a community of learners. That's a great part of the program, as they start each morning as a group in a group atmosphere, talk about the day's agenda, some share-out opportunities. Lunchtime, there's a community lunch where they get together with the CSC folks, and they, again, have an opportunity to be part of the community and hold each other accountable, so to speak. The whole child approach, again, just something our staff is trained in the trauma-informed process. We're able to identify and be aware of students' struggles and support them in that area. And then lastly, and certainly not least, is the partnership with the Community Service Consortium, or CSC. And I'll talk a little bit more about that partnership now.
So let me just add real quickly. This is a new slide, so this is not in the online presentation. We added this today. So for board members, I just want you to look up here for this next slide. We added it. We felt it was important to add part of our presentation.
Yes, thank you for that. What we have on the left side is our Central High School Alternative Ed Program, which is a diploma-track program. We are tracking the credits earned, working towards graduation, their essential skills, career-related learning standards, and all those students have individual student support within the program. On the right side, the Community Service Consortium, or CSC, they have more of a GED track focusing on job readiness skills, job internships, and again, have an abundance of individual student support, which is huge for these kids. The unique, one of the unique features of our program is some of the shared opportunities that come from this. And you can see in the center column there, there are some electives, some breakout opportunities, some of those that have been established, or the Culinary Arts Program, Financial Literacy, the Stream Lab. They also are gaining career experience in different areas, have an opportunity to take the Work Keys, which is a job readiness certificate, and another way to earn your essential skills. They've also taken food handler certification, and many of them have been certified in that area, and we're working on CPR and First Aid certification. So we'll continue to grow those opportunities. Some of the celebrations that we have so far, and again, these are going to grow, but it's a starting point, and it sure is exciting. We had our first graduate this fall that completed the credit requirement and had a great celebration for that student here in Hawk Hall. And that was, that was great. Lot of eyes on our other students watching that process, and it was, it was great. Currently have 17 students enrolled in the program, and we're just continuing to grow that. Instructional assistant, we've added an instructional assistant, Mr. Zach Collins, who comes in and works with our certified teacher, which is a big help. And then logistics, we are making great strides. You know, we're, we're working on some things with transportation and, you know, meals, off-site meal preparation. And like I said, there's just a lot of flexibility and ability to go slow to go fast, and that's what's going on right now.
And then finally, we wanted to take a look at some of the next steps. We're looking at next year, the possibility of, we've got to still budget out for High School Success for next year, but we'd like to look at the possibility of an additional teacher to partner with. Ms. Nikki Hansen is our, our current Alt Ed teacher, but, and she's able to provide some of the English Language Arts teaching. We'd like to bring somebody on who has a math lens, can do some of it, so that it's not all online instruction that students are doing for math. We'd like to look at expanded options to support district office tutoring. So when students are in a tutoring situation, offering some of that through our Alt Ed program rather than having off-site tutoring at the library and things of that nature. So we're just exploring what that could look like. Continued growth in our partnership with Shemeketa Community College and CSC both. So how do we continue to offer a menu of options for our students to keep them engaged in some sort of a program and moving forward, so we don't just lose them as dropouts? And then finally, being able to implement some support systems here onsite, things like counseling, administrators, student services, ELL, mental health supports. When that's all at a distance, that becomes a little bit challenging to try to figure out how do we offer IEP supports, or how do we offer some ELL support, so that we can broaden out those student groups that we're bringing to the Alt Ed program. And so those are some of our goals as we move forward. Any questions for us?
So just a question on the partnership with CSC. Can you sort of give us a flavor for how that works, take a culinary class or what, something like that? Is it sort of open to students from either one, or how does that work?
Yeah.
You got that?
Sure, I sure can, yes. CSC right now, they are, their schedule is Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And we have a designated time after lunch where the, the group gets together for a, an elective, whichever may be offered during that time. So they forecast, they choose, they look at the resources, they pick that elective that might be offered during that time, and plug it in, and it's an option, opportunity for the kids on both programs.
Okay. So it's primarily our Alt Ed students can take advantage of the elective classes that CSC has put together at this point. Okay.
And I think that's the, the beauty of this, you know, having one of our strategic goals be community partnership. I've told you all, we can't do it alone. And so that opportunity of what does that partnership look like, right? The times we have to stay in our own lanes, but there are times that we can collectively do that together. I know that expansion of electives is, is one of the key things. I'm going to recognize, because she is here tonight, Ms. Mona Hines, who runs the program, I think has been, again, these are not easy things to develop. They're sitting here. I have seen the three of them in very hard conversations, which is, you know, what we need to do to support our students and making sure we're doing what's right for both organizations, and obviously, the students in the community. But again, I think it's, it's a work in progress, but really looking forward to how we continue to, to grow that partnership together.
So I have a question. Are the electives onsite, or do they go offsite for them? Are they online? Are they?
So the electives that they do in partnership with CSC are onsite here at Henry Hill, and that's one of the, the benefits of the partnership. We don't want our students doing everything online. Otherwise, we would just have an online school, which isn't really the best effective way for a lot of students to learn. They need that connection to an instructor. And we don't have the staffing to provide multiple teachers. And so this partnerships gives students opportunities for career-related electives that can serve them for potential job opportunities later on, but then also meet those fine arts electives and just general electives that they need toward their graduation credits.
Does this affect it? Did this affect at all when Shemeketa kind of, this wasn't affected? Okay.
So those are two completely different programs. The Shemeketa partnership program is essentially a dual-credit program for earning college credit at the same time. So it was a completely different student population that we would be serving through that program, which really was affected by student
Yeah.
... choice.
Choice, yeah, yeah.
I think this is fabulous. Absolutely fabulous. We have needed this so badly for so long. You know, if we go back in time in the magic time machine, Jason managed an alternative ed program that Central School District had that was fantastic. And if we can take this model and move it more toward something that, that has even more with it, which I know you're going to do, our students really, really deserve a chance for something other than the standard high school education, because it just doesn't work for some of them. And I just really want to offer thanks to you guys for taking this on, and to you for recognizing that we seriously need to have something like this. So kudos to all of you who are working on it. And Mona, Mona has been so involved in this project, and she did it by herself for a few years, and I'm so pleased that now we've got a partnership. I can't think of any better community person to work with us than Mona on working with these kids. Good job, girl.
Can I tell one personal story?
Yeah.
It's about you. It's about one of your Alt Ed.
Yes.
You have to come up to the microphone. I would just remind Mona to use first name only.
Well, Mona's coming up too, Jan, in addition, in addition to you. I'd also like to thank our Oregon State Legislature for giving us the High School Success Act, because without that funding source, we wouldn't be able to do this. And so, you know, those of you who are voting, that kind of financial support really does make a difference in our schools and the opportunities that we're able to provide.
And I would never use a name.
I know, I'm just reminding, it's my, it's how I am.
So, sorry, I have to stand up. So I would just tell you that we did not start that long ago. I'm just going to use one example. You know that the youth we're talking about are extremely at risk already, and we haven't even begun, as Donna said, to touch this. Young woman came in, would not come into lunch, sat in the hallway on the floor. Three months later, this person is on one of the work crews and is working and is meeting and talking in that lunchroom every day. That's the kind of thing that's happening every day. I am blessed to be part of this partnership, so thank you.
Thank you, Mona.
So is this, is this like, kind of like step one towards CTE kind of?
Yeah, I think this is beginning steps to get it going. I think that they, they have spent really last year diving into different programmings that are being successful across the state. And so, again, in those, Donna, will you go back to the next steps? Some of those options are up there. I, you know, Jason has sort of coined it like a choice menu
Sure.
to potentially build into that. And so, again, some of those options are up there as, as we start thinking about what that might look like. So yes, there, I mean, how do you do internships, right? What does the workforce, you know, where, because we can get credit for those types of things, and that's that, what I call that messy good work between not only our current community partner here, but other community partners that may become part of this as we continue to build.
So who, who would be the contact person? A gentleman comes to the hotel like once a month with Baker Technical Institute, and he's going to different schools and, and taking a mobile
I would say either Jason or Ms. Servignan, either one of them. So we'll get you.
Yeah.
I'll get you that.
I'll get you that. I'll get that contact.
We are always looking for partnerships.
Yeah, he's totally, he wants to, to be a part of 13J.
Yep.
Just one question I forgot from earlier on, just to make sure I understand the numbers correctly. On the first slide that you showed, where it shows for this year's class of 223, there's 43 seniors with 18 or fewer credits, and then 28 that have 15. Is that, do I add those together to find out how many are below credits, or is, or are the 28 part of 43?
The 28 are part of the 43.
Okay.
So of those 43, 28 of them have fewer than
Okay.
And was that of September, or is that current right now?
That was as of September, so starting in the fall.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And I think that brings us up to our Division 22.
Right, you can do it for you? I'm more than, you got it? Mr. Presser, will you switch that for me, please?
Do you want this?
Yep.
My favorite place to turn my leg.
Yep, just tell me when to go. So before you go, this is, just to sort of set the stage, this is our presentation today, really looking at our annual review of the Division 22 standards, which are for, really, to the overall, how are we doing for both the public elementary and secondary schools. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the short, lovely presentation of Division 22 Assurance.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cabista. I'm going to start with just a little background on Division 22 standards. On February 1st of each year, school districts are to report to their local school board the district's standing with respect to all Division 22 standards for public elementary and secondary schools, set forth in OAR 581-022-2305. Okay? One of the things that we do, a big part of it, and again, I really have the easy job of this, and I've got to give credit to administrative assistants, administrators, instructional assistants. We are collecting evidence of 53 different assurances or OARs that we are doing these things as a district. And we keep them, some in hard copy like here, and some electronically. And I send out requests, and bless their hearts, they just keep sending stuff back to me, and we collect it. But that's how we collect our information of evidence. After the evidence is collected and organized, which allows us to evaluate, again, the things that we're doing well and areas that we can improve on, which is very helpful. After all the information is collected and organized, the district administrative team evaluates the evidence of each OAR and determines the district's compliance with Division 22. Okay? One of the documents that we use to help us through this process is this, it's known as kind of a project charter document. And what this does is it lists our 53 OARs. It gives specifics to ownership or the person of support, and then it lists the areas of evidence. And some of those are found in our policy that are listed above. Some are hard copy. Like I said, we have those listed on the right side of the document. Thank you. Last year, as you remember, some of you, we did fall short, and we had one area of noncompliance, and that was with our Human Sexuality Education curriculum. And as you know, I think it was last school board meeting, we had a nice report that we are in full swing with that curriculum, and we are now in compliance with that OAR. Okay? So that has kept us, now we are 100% in compliance. Our next steps, thank you. We will, again, as we're sharing our, our information, our report with you now, next, what we'll do is we will post that we have, we will assure the public that we have met all those areas in Division 22, and post that on our district website. And then we will submit a document to ODE that also states that we've had this meeting this evening, and that we are in compliance with Division 22.
So what will we actually post? Will we post like all 53 of these with the?
There's a statement that they provide for us that we'll post on there that shows that we are in compliance with those standards.
Oh, so we are, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Just hoping
Any other questions this evening?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, that brings us to our financial and program reports. Take it away, Cease.
Thank you. Those were not included in your online package, so you should have in front of you a report from me that is made up of a cover sheet here with a couple of noted notes about the reports, and then two reports. So this is the month when we look at our quarterly financial report as of the date of 12/31/2019. And so there is a revenue picture on the front, and on the back is the expenditures. This is just the general fund, the significant portion of our money. And this report gives you back our actuals for three years, our budgeted and actual for the 2018-19 year, which is now an audited final picture of our actuals, and then our budgeted actual year-to-date and the percentage to budget. So we are showing a large percentage of our revenue, 12/31, 50% of the year, but we are at 70% of our total overall revenue, because the chunk that comes in property taxes mostly comes in November, and that's our second-largest chunk. So it creates a little bit of a bump there. On the expenditure side, the line that you really want to look at is towards the bottom. On the expenditure side, the line that you really want to look at is towards the bottom. It's called subtotal prior to reserves and that shows us at 48% in the far right column, yellow column, pretty close to 50, so that makes, feels like we're doing well. We're spending right about as expected. And as the notes indicate on there, there's not much to be concerned about, certainly on the expense side. The revenue side, there, there is a sort of a large variance that I want to point out to you. And that is under the section called Beginning Fund Balance. It's about the bottom colored line on the revenue side of the page, the short side. And the Beginning Fund Balance that we budgeted at $7,800,000 is, came in at an audited figure of $7,522. And that would be rather concerning to me, especially since we sort of are usually looking at that right up through the end of June. One thing that happened is we get an allocation from the Lamont ESD each year. That final allocation for the 18-19 year was in a check dated June 30th and so we got it in the mail in July. And because we operate on a cash basis, we can't say, oh, that was really last year's income, so put it back there. And so that actually reduced our Beginning Fund Balance. But when we get to the end of this year and you look up at the line item number R2102, just about halfway through the page, at the end of this year, it's going to be over budget because it has some of last year's money. So that overall, the money's in a little bit different place, but luckily we are going to be in a good position where we're not going to have to restrict anything based on the way that revenue looks at this point. So that was one oddity there to bring to your attention and I'll entertain any other questions about those line items.
Quick, we're curious, since we are collecting the money faster than we're spending it now, what, what do we do with it? Do we invest it short-term or does it just go in the bank or?
Yeah, we, all of our working capital is actually in the local government investment pool, a little better than a money market, not great. We, you know, there are some other sort of mid-range funds that the state manages for local governments. We could look at moving in and out, but I don't really have staff people to pay attention to that, so I'd rather just keep it in one spot.
It's nice to know we're making something on it.
Good question, yeah. Nope.
Not just at the desk or?
The second item actually is about our Budget Committee. It's starting to be that time of year and we actually have three vacancies on the Budget Committee. Two of them actually have been vacant for a while, the other one was filled by somebody who lived out of zone. That term is up and that person has moved out of the district. So we have three openings and there you are, represent the entire city limits of Ammon. So I don't know, there might be an announcement tomorrow night about it at the City Council meeting too, if you stay tuned to the Winnipeg. So if you all would like to recruit any of your neighbors to the Budget Committee, I do make the point this year, we, we will be talking about the Student Investment Act. We will be talking about the new work we have to do and the money that comes with it and appreciate having a full Budget Committee to help, help understand that, to ask us the questions and to get the word out about that, so.
How much flexibility do we have on spending student investment act stuff? Don't we have to kind of specify what we're going to do with it in order to get it?
We, we, we have to, we submit a plan and they will, basically the negotiation is about outcomes, right? Do they think we're putting the money where we need to be to do the outcomes we agree to with them?
And part of that is, that's why I was very intentional when we started community chats last spring and then the fall, that we encompass those four buckets potentially that we have to be able to put. So to some degree, our SIS, SIA plan, and again, the buildings and departments had their first drafts due to me on Friday and which I was, you know, very pleased that we were moving in that direction. We're going to do some meetings with our, with our unions and then as well as our community, so, so watch for that because we're going to release that here. But we're, again, we're just barely getting, I mean, we just, last Friday, two Fridays ago, excuse me.
Two weeks ago.
Had some adjustments to what we thought we were having to do. So we are in a good place because of what we did with our strategic plan. We are, that is guiding the work within that. And then, again, those objective areas are going to be the key focus of that with part of that SIA planning.
But that planning will happen before the budget process.
Yes, we have to.
And so basically, a lot of those questions get answered before it hits the Budget Committee is all.
They do, but explaining how we're going to fund them, because what we submit to the state are strategies and we don't submit dollars yet to the state, so helping figure out, I mean, the state will have, hopefully by then we'll get our plan in early enough, they'll have come back and said, yep, your plan's approved. I mean, unfortunately, of course, their district's asking about building new buildings.
It's an interesting point though, that, you know, we will be discussing it as a part of the Budget Committee. It might be fairly well prescribed, but being a part of the discussions and understanding that process actually is, is going to be helpful.
Right. Yeah. I would also add to that, we are in the midst of starting negotiations both with our CEA and OSCE representatives. So again, there may be things in that plan that have little notes that say, again, based on negotiation, so the, the plan as identified for us actually has potentially what's the first choice and then if that doesn't happen, what's your second, third? And so we'll have to, we're in the process of building that. And then my goal is to get a draft of that to you all at our PLC on the 24th.
We, we actually submit a three-year plan. And in the course of a three-year plan, we select different strategies to meet our goals and they will approve the plan and then we can mix and match the strategies based on availability. So if we plan to hire someone and we can't get that person hired in year one, we can move that around. So there, it'll be very complex as you all get to approve the plan, but then trying to budget for that's going to be another great opportunity.
So when is the first Budget Committee meeting?
That is April 20, 20th, I'm going.
Yeah, we have pushed it.
In April.
Yeah, we've pushed it because of some of the, a, part of with the Student Success Act, but then also then projections and different things that we're, we're looking into.
It's actually where it, where typically, the, the two meetings are still all we have scheduled and so we have those scheduled on April 20th and on May 18th.
They'll be at six.
They'll be at six, yeah. We started those a little bit earlier, so. The other thing attached there is our Risk Management Plan, or Report. And this is a, another shout-out to Jason Clark. This is Jason's night to be recognized. The report starts off with our year-to-date 1920 Risk Management Activities, including four workers' comp injuries. If you look at last year, in a full year admittedly, we had 18 employees injured on the job and the year before that, 16 total. And the reason I give a shout-out to Jason is he has taken on the assignment of managing our district-wide Safety Committee. That, that was always kind of a straggling effort and he has provide, gotten a group of dedicated folks together. He is using resources like our insurer who provides on-the-spot training and really sort of working through agendas with that group to have them be more aware and be able to build more aware in their buildings and departments of safety issues. So certainly obviously helps that we haven't had a lot of ice yet because of slips and falls, that's.
I just leaned over and said, I don't, this is my hardest part because workers' comp, we just try not to talk about it.
But, yeah.
We're in a good place.
So anyway, I am feeling quite good about that. I think that's, you know, and obviously the, the system is built on our insurance rates to look at a three-year history. So if we can start trending downward, then that's going to help us in the future, so.
Do we do anything in the parking?
Can you speak in your mic, Dorsey? I'm not sure she can.
Hello. Do we do anything in our parking lots when it does get icy?
Sure, yeah.
What do we actually do?
We have a product that our huge maintenance department of two guys travel around and they are able to cover the parking lots with, with the product. And then the custodians are responsible for sidewalks and areas at each building. So we have, they come to work at five o'clock to get started with that, but, you know, it's still tough. Those are difficult things.
Okay, any questions for Cease? Okay, let's move on to the Superintendent Reports.
So the first thing I want to update with you, last week, Principal Sorensen and I met with representatives from Shemecata Community College. I know that that was brought back to the board. So we are in the process, as we stated, you know, part of this is about earning credits or dual credits for college. So we started those conversations to really look at that programming piece and she's really taking the lead in having conversation with them as we begin that forecasting, potentially looking at, are there classes that can be offered that we think students will have interest? As well as some other programming that Shemecata shared with us. So again, as I, as I shared, was it that two board meetings ago, really it was a pause where we are in those conversations with them to find really good programming at the college level for credit. Again, we already have Will Lamont Promise, which is, continues to be successful in our high school. We have college and, college credit, which is also, again, led by our, our teaching staff. So it's really finding those niches that we continue to offer students. So I'll continue to update you as we move those and progress those to see really if, what will come onboard potentially this next fall. Some of that may be pushed to the following year because they are doing some new programming things and we're in those conversations. Some of that also could be tied to career and technical education. So again, we had a really robust conversation with them and we know that we're going to continue to, to build that partnership because it's vital. A lot of our students go to Shemecata, so we'll, we'll keep giving you updates as we move forward with that. There's a high probability potentially that a contract would come this way because of what we might be looking at to partner with them. So just an update there. And then the other piece I have is just, again, as we continue through the policy, I do want to say, we are getting into and some policy work that actually I've asked for a small subcommittee to, again, re-join with myself and then potentially union leadership, depending on what we are working through. I'm also going to, there's a potential that our student representatives on the board will be part of that process as we have some student things that we want to gather information out. So Director Klein and Director Jobe are going to be on that small committee as we start to look into those policies. There may be, some questions have been, there's a, there are a couple new policies that have come forth where already the union has reached out to me to get some clarification and so I think it will be a good conversation on those adjustments as we, as we move forward. Again, I do the small committee because I think it's important. There are some shifts in, because of the law, some shifts in policy that there are options we could go. And so we want to have a robust smaller group that, that be able to have those conversations and then if we feel that, that, as an example, no, we want CEA and OSCE to give us voice in that, they have that opportunity. If we want students to have voice, then my goal is to work with these lovely ladies to be able to do that, what that might look like at the high school, which means that policies may slow down here for a little bit. I may only come with one, two, or three, because again, with some of the changes that we're having to look at. So with that, I do have a few today. The first one, for first reading is IGDJ, which is tied to interscholastic activities. This is an updated policy tied to obviously student interscholastics. It clarifies participation compliance with the laws and it specifically is tied to Title IX and the process we, we do to make sure that our programs are equitable. There's also language for employee, students, parents, alumni and volunteers prohibiting from recruiting or attempting to recruit other students into programming. That is a significant concern in most states across the country about recruiting or people recruiting students into a program, so there's clear language on that, that, that is not allowed. You also see there's a change in the policy and you're going to start to see this with all of the new policies coming from the Oregon School Board Association, changes to pronouns in the policy to support equitable practices within the school district. The second one, JEA, is compulsory attendance. This is also an update of the policy with removal of language related to reporting, to reporting students for suspensions of driving privileges for their absences. So that language has been completely eliminated. There's new language added as it relates to students who are eligible for, who are eligible military children and an exemption of 10 days after a military transfer or pending transfers, again, as indicated in those official orders. That's an important piece that's been added in, in the new law this year. And again, you're also going to see the change in the pronouns in the policy to support the equitable practices within the school district. The next policy, JECA, Admission of Resident Students, also an update of the policy tied to residency, specifically students whose parents or guardians voluntarily place their students outside the home within a public or private agency, living in a licensed, certified or approved substitute care program. And residency is established pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute. I'm going to pause for a second, that's a big sentence. We do have those organizations within our school district. We actually have many of them. So this is, again, we are already doing this in our practices, but again, this just clarifies what really that looks like within that, because again, we have students that are in different homes here, where parents may live in Bend, they may live in Idaho. Again, they are central school district students because they reside in here and, and we have to give them their educational services. It also clarifies for students, again, who are military children and have residency. And again, you'll see that change as well in the pronouns to the policy to make sure that we have equitable practices within the school district. Next one, JFCF, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying, teen dating violence, or domestic violence for students. This is an updated policy with our commitment as a board and school district to provide a safe, positive, and productive learning environments for all students. This policy clarifies retaliation against any person who is a victim and the potential consequences and appropriate action should retaliation take place. There is also additional language related to staff whose behavior found, is found in violation of this policy could be subject or will be subject to consequences and appropriate actions, which may include up to discipline and including that dismissal. There's also additional language, was also added as relates to third parties. So again, contractors potentially, that could come in to the school district. And then finally, the definition of domestic violence has been added, which reads abuse between family and/or household member as those terms are described in ORS 107.705. I did bring a, if you have questions about what that actually means, I did bring the actual ORS. I think as I've talked through the last couple of meetings, especially with our youth survey, our teen youth survey, this is a, a change and we are having some of those concerns from our students within our, within our community. So this is just language of what that actually means of abuse and from a state law perspective. And then the second one is really JFCRR, which is the Administrative Regulation. This is really information only for you. This is where documents for the board on changes made in the Administrative Regulation, it clarifies changes of reports, who receives the reports, new language related to reports against the superintendent, because again, against the superintendent, because again, if that claim should come up, then we need to have those processes in place. It also has how to report against the board as a whole, should there be concerns, or individually for each board member of reports, and again, against the chair or persons who may go file such report. I'm going to pause there. There has been, in the last couple of years, some concerns of that, where students have raised questions and boards not listened, and/or, and/or may have bullied students into certain things. So again, I think that that is a majority of why that language has been put in here, both from a superintendent and board. Again, we're always going to have student voice. I think we are building good systems of what that looks like, but there's a pretty, state law really defines what that looks like, so that's part of why that's in there.
It's been an issue in the state, not here.
Correct, in the state, not here. If I did not say that correctly, I apologize. In the state, not in this district.
I thought you were talking about here, and then you started talking.
In the state of Oregon.
Didn't sound right.
Nope, I appreciate that. That is it for me.
Okay, that brings us to the Board Reports, a few things.
Actually, with the change, can we, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I apologize.
That consent and then.
After consent, my fault.
We'll wrap up.
My fault.
You should have all received an email from Adriana about Safe Schools Training. So there's mandatory training now that we have to do. There's three different classes that we need to take.
I passed.
You're done? You're done? Started?
The normal ones that we're supposed to take. If you didn't.
This is the first time the Board has done specific training, so.
I might give them to you if I did them at a different school.
I think we have to have the records here.
I will follow up on that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
I'm not sure, but I will, Dorsey, I will follow up on that.
It doesn't take long, and you can be doing something else while you're doing it.
And how, how.
If it's anything like the Safe Sport, what it's.
Pretty much common sense.
Yeah.
Although there is some legal.
If you've done them in prior years, do you still need to do them?
It's the regular every year thing.
We will move, we will do this every year.
I need to do it, I haven't done it. I was told.
Okay.
I just need to provide you with certain.
Could be, we'll check. So we did have a couple of negotiations prep meetings, and there's a meeting tomorrow night, negotiations meeting with licensed staff. So I would consider that to be the kickoff. There's been a lot of really, I think, excellent prep work done by the staff, and we're optimistic that we're going to get started, and targeting to get through all that by the June timeframe. So we'll be keeping you apprised as we get into that. On that particular negotiations, the Board doesn't directly participate, but Peggy and I are both on that particular committee representing the Board. The, on Friday of this week, there is a bond OSBA workshop over in Salem, and I have it on my calendar to go. Are, and you're going, Cease? Is anyone else interested in attending that?
It usually sells out.
Could be.
They were just advertising for it.
Oh, were they?
Yeah.
Okay.
End of last week, so it wasn't sold out as of the end of last week.
A couple, couple of years before they've cut off.
Yeah, if you are interested, we would make an effort to find a way. Okay, so that's Friday.
So I wonder if it's just the two of you going?
Is that all that's going?
Yeah, I am, I'm going to a different conference right now, so Cease is my designee for that, since I cannot be there.
Okay, and then that, so we have a PLC meeting then on the twenty-fourth of February, which will be continuing our discussions about the long range or the strategic plan, the Student Success Act, and that's here on the twenty-fourth. And I won't be here, but you all will.
Still six o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah, six o'clock. And did you want to say anything else about topics for that?
No, I think that, again, we're going to continue to come back to the strategic plan. The SIA, or the Student Investment Account, which is tied to the Student Success Act, we have a, my goal is that I will have a draft, of which really has, well, at that point, been through a couple different groups internally to start. So my goal is we'll have a pretty good steps of really having you review and then answer any questions that we might have. Because the goal is to put it on either the March second, and then potentially, if we can't make that, we do have another, I think, meeting March sixteenth, that potentially that could get changed into a.
That's to approve the plan.
Yeah.
So the.
To approve, it's the first step of the approval of the plan. We have to do a second step, which will happen after the approval from the Oregon Department of Ed.
Yeah, just keep in mind, these PLCs are important because these rules are coming out now. We're trying to stay a step ahead. And now it's getting close to, you know, really where the rubber hits the road, and we want to be in there getting the money. Okay? And that's it for me. Any questions about any other Board topics? Okay, that brings us to the Consent Agenda. It's our minutes and our policies, second reading. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I don't think there are any minutes attached to the agenda, so.
We will get that.
That would be approved tonight, you'll have to approve those the next.
Yep.
Thanks, Cease. So it is just the policy update, second reading? Do I have a motion?
Someone.
Thanks, Dawn, is it our second?
Second.
Thanks, Peggy. All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously, and that brings us to our Business Agenda. I think we need a motion on Division twenty-two. I need a motion to approve the Division twenty-two findings as presented earlier to report to the Department of, Oregon Department of Education for the 2019, 2020 school year.
I'm open to approve.
Thanks to all, is our second?
Second.
Dawn, thank you for the second. All in favor of approving the Division Two report as presented, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously.
Due there on purpose.
And that brings us to closing comments by any of the Board members.
I just have a comment. Sitting through comments from the floor, I always like hearing from people, but then when I leave, sometimes I, you know, forget who the person is or don't get back to my notes. And I just was wondering if at a PLC or sometime, if we could come up with some sort of a spreadsheet or something that the Board can have access to, that says who the person was, what the problem, you know, what the comment was, and the date, and the follow-up, and the way that it was followed up, and just come up with some sort of tracking thing so that I, in my mind, know, you know, don't, I'm not forgetting that we had that comment and that there was a follow-up.
That's an excellent idea, yeah.
We can do that. Anything else? I'll add, I appreciate you guys coming tonight and presenting. You know, I think my thoughts on it would be that we do in fact have, you know, ask for a review at the appropriate time as a part of the strategic plan I've mentioned a couple of times that we're working on. Part of it is geared towards funding, but more importantly, it's geared towards one of the priorities of the district, because you are hitting on, in terms of the culture, participation is a big piece, an important piece of what we're trying to do as a district. So you all, I mean, those are red flags, so we will definitely be following up. And one of the ways that the Board can help is just by asking for that follow-up formally in one of our board meetings, and you've seen some of the reports tonight, and that's how we do it. But appreciate your coming and presenting. And I think that is it. Anything else? Okay.
I thought that the the Thespian Regionals that was held at Central this past weekend, I would have liked to have seen a little more, like, news about it or something like that. It was just, why are all these kids running around in black on the street? So, you know, just, if we could be, I mean, because I know we get a lot of stuff like, and our Friday report says, and I don't think I saw it in the Friday report, but like, sports things going on, academic whatever going on, but if we could be kind of, keep an eye on strange things, anomalies like regional Thespian finals or whatever, I think that would have been really cool to, I mean, I don't know if it was.
Let me adjourn, and then we'll talk.